The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the City Council of Denison, Texas is now in session. This evening, we have the honor of having with us Pastor Freddie Orr of the Ecclesia Baptist Church who will lead us in our invocation.
I got it, Our Father. We come now just to say thank you for another day. Then we ask, Master, that you would bless this city as a whole, then bless the council. We pray that you would guide them and direct them in wise decisions for the people in which they serve. And Father, we just want to thank you for the time that they give and their efforts that they put in to make Denison a better place in which to live. Keep them safe in your care, as only you can do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. This evening, we have with us Jackie Judkins, who is a U.S. Army veteran, and he served for four years in the Vietnam War. Sir, thank you for your service, and he's going to lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
We are extremely grateful that we have a culture within our city government that recognizes that employees are the most valuable asset that we have. And we get about once a quarter, get the opportunity to recognize those who have completed specific years of service. So Amy Lay and I are going to meet at the podium, and we're going to recognize employees with from five years of service to 30 years of service. And just let me say to each and every one of you, we are grateful that you choose to be part of our team.
I would like to mention, first of all, this is a place that couldn't be here tonight for whatever reason, but it's worth mentioning their name and celebrating their contribution to our city. With five years of service, we have Tina Keeble, Shalonda Moore, Dory Smith, Kathy Spraberry, and Jacob Thornhill. With 15 years of service, James Carson. Tonight, recognizing with us, recognizing those that are with us, five years of service, we have Kimberly Bowden.
Kimberly, thank you so much for your service.
Five years of service, Chief Cradler.
Chief? Wow, five years. Time flies when you're having fun, right?
Employees of 15 years of service include Shane Kinnon.
Shane, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And Andrew Meeks.
Andrew, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you were...
That was good. Now, this gentleman retired last week, but he has come back tonight for us to celebrate 20 years of service, Chuck Mina.
Chuck, thank you so much for 20 years of service. That's, we appreciate all that you did for the city.
And then lastly, with 30 years of service, Steve Thornhill.
Well, Steve, 30 years, you must know where all the bodies are buried, right? Thank you, sir, for your service. Do you want a picture of all the group, Mary?
Wonderful.
All right. If everybody will come up here. Where would you like us?
Should you like to be in the middle or...
Well, I'll go anywhere you want me to. Mary, you're the photographer.
One, two, three. Let me do one.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, in each council meeting, we set aside time where any citizen can speak on any action item that's listed on the agenda. In order to speak, you must fill out a request to speak card before reaching this point in our agenda. We have one card. Is this the only one? We have one card. Casey McBroom? Okay. Casey, at the time of the public meeting, if you still wish to speak, I'll acknowledge you then. All right? So that was the only card. Therefore, there will be no public comments. Item four, consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Item five, A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance, creating a conditional use permit, CUP, for the expanded use of a storage facility for five-star storage located at 3621 Posboro Road, case number 2021-84CUP. Mr. Medina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening. This item, here's for a CUP, for an expansion of five-star storage. Here's the proposed property outlined in yellow, just north of FM 120. As you can see, the property is predominantly built out as a self-storage facility. The applicant's wishing to expand their business to the south. This is currently existing as two lots. If approved tonight, the applicant will submit a condition, I'm sorry, a site plan in addition to a replat, creating this as one contiguous site. Here's the zoning of the subject property. It's currently zoned commercial, which requires a CUP. And this is the initial site plan which we review, have reviewed. As you can see, they're adding on additional storage directly to the south. It's kind of flipped. So the proposed expansion consists of eight enclosed buildings, buildings, and 49,000 square feet, and one covered open-air storage consisting of 15,000 square feet. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the CUP on June 22nd. Present for any questions you may have, and I believe the applicant is here as well.
Questions for Mr. Medina? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance creating additional use permit for an expansion to the existing mini warehouse self-storage facility, five-star storage.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Doty and a second by Councilmember Crowley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. The motion carries. Item five B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning of approximately six acres located south of West Washington Street and east of Ray Drive, from the single-family 7.5 SF 7.5 zoning district to the single-family 5 SF 5 zoning district, case number 2021-087Z. Mr. Medina.
Thank you again. This is item five B. Here's the subject property outlined in red. I know it's a little hard to see with our zoning map here, so I drew some arrows, but it's directly south of West Washington Street and north of what is Ray Park. Here's an aerial of the subject property here. The applicant's requesting to rezone the property from SF 7.5 to SF 5 to allow for more narrower lots. They have submitted a final plat that shows some lots being 50 feet wide and some others being 60. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval on June 22nd, 2021. City staff also recommends approval, and the applicant is also here.
Questions for Mr. Medina? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council.
So I just have a concern about this, in that, I guess the purpose of changing it to an SF 5, is there a purpose other than to just to pack as many homes on this plot as possible, or...
Yeah, David Couch, 19 West Murray, Denison, Texas. Yeah, the adjacent property is actually part of 40 lots. Across the street was an infill district, which allows 50-foot widths. That's the reason to go to that, to that district, SF 5.
So because of the adjacent neighborhood adds 50?
Right, yeah. Adjacent, this is, this is actually 13 lots of a 40, 48 lot plat. And this zoning out here, oh, this was 7.5, and the zoning across the street was actually an infill residential overlay, and they allowed 50-foot widths there, so we're trying to achieve 50-foot widths of the property across the street.
I have a question. I've noticed that on the outlines of the lots, some of them are really deep and some of them are not. Is a...
Yeah, the lot that's open is going to be a future development for a cul-de-sac, which will be an additional five lots there.
That's the two-acre?
The two-acre tract, uh-huh. So that would be phase two of this project.
Chris, could you go to the slide, just so we can look at it? On the big screen? No, the one that actually shows the plat? Is there a packet?
The reason, another reason that lots are so long is that particular spot, I think in 1902, the railroad had a water tower there, and they had been bermed up. So the topo that has a big berm on the backside of those lots, so we just incorporated it instead of trying to do a cul-de-sac there as well.
Is there any reason why you couldn't just keep it at 7.5?
Um, we wouldn't be able to get the, achieve the lots that we've planned to this point, so...
I just, the concern I have is, is just, we're building a lot of, a lot of, I feel like here in Denison, every buildable piece of land, we're just trying to jam-pack as many homes on those plots as possible. And is that, is that something that we really want, you know, visually, you know, from a visual standpoint, you know? You know, 7,500 square foot lot is already pretty small, you know?
Right. I mean, I think it's just relevant to what's across the street from this property. I mean, directly across the street, I mean, where you have homes that are probably appraised value around 100 to 120. So I mean, to, you know, to go much bigger than that of a footprint of a house, I mean, to go 60, which is what SF 7.5 calls for, I just think that, you know, then you're putting a really small house on a bigger lot. I don't know if we achieve anything based on what's across the street.
Mr. Counsel, wouldn't there be any way, you know, I think, referring to Councilmember Cora, you know, in terms of the back half, typically on a SF 5 or SF 7.5, that lot's going to be somewhere around 100, 150 feet deep, right?
Correct.
So I think what, you know, maybe one of the concerns would be the overall depth, that you really couldn't get two lots out of that if you were to put across the street in the middle, right, or an access road. Is that, is there any possibility of looking at that?
No, I don't think that that's, I mean, I don't think that would be a plan that would, that we would put into effect. I mean, I think that land, I mean, it's just going to be a piece of, I mean, there's about a 15-foot berm in the back of this whole land that, that water tower was, if it would ever needed to drain off, I don't know the engineering, but that, that whole berm was, and that's prevent from water from go shed down, that housing developed that's behind it.
Right. Well, and I, you know, I'm just thinking about it from a maintenance standpoint, if I own that lot and it's 350 feet deep, what do I do with that back 100 or 200 feet of lot that I don't want incorporated into my yard, you know, it's just not that usable? I didn't know that there's a berm running through there, but that's good information. Would there be a way to, you know, reduce the overall depth of those front lots to maybe give a greater comfort factor to the council, in terms of that not being a future maintenance issue for the city, as far as trying to enforce, you know, if one neighbor has 200 feet that they're not maintaining, then that becomes a hindrance, or, you know, attractive nuisance for the next-door neighbor, and all of a sudden now we have, you know, armor issues, or we have animal issues, or whatever. That's, I think that's some of the concern that may not be being expressed, you know?
It's understandable. I mean, we did have it drawn in with the cul-de-sac there until we actually got the engineers involved in the topo, and they said, you know, it's just, it's going to be unreasonable for five lots to do all this work. It's going to cost like $150,000 in earthwork.
Do you all own that property to the north of this track?
Wait, the 60 acres, we're close to closing on the 60 acres north of this, yes.
I'm just wondering if there's a way to possibly tie in that property on the backside of the berm, not trying to cause any issues for you as a developer, but I think, Mike, would that give you some more comfort if that property were incorporated to something else instead of just being attached to those lots, just kind of as default?
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying? Even though you're not increasing the density that you're looking for, if that's the, you know, if that's the developer's goal, is to have five, you know, 50-foot lots, maybe that would give you some more, I don't know, I'm just thinking up here.
Yeah, I just...
It's, I mean, it's going to be kind of boxed in at the end, because we are proposing a road that goes, that goes north on this property, which is, which is going to be Washington Street that continues on. It's actually a 210 house development that's going to the north side of that on 60 acres. So that, that piece of property doesn't really, you know, there is going to be 150-foot, 150 to 175-foot left, but you can't cut a road down it, then you have 70-foot on each side. So it, we felt like that, you know, not being able to do a cul-de-sac, not being able to cut a road back south through it, that we would incorporate it with these lots.
So based on this view, Washington Street is on the north end of that yellow line, correct?
Right.
If you're going to cut a street in that direction?
There will be a street coming back to the big four-acre pond, lake at the back there. It'll continue, it'll continue to the corner of the yellow there, and it'll, it'll come back around and then down to the pond. It's just one of those pieces of property that, you know, there's not going to be a whole lot of use for. I mean, incorporating it in a lot makes more sense than having a track that's landlocked. Because eventually, with that road coming, coming through there and then turning, I mean, that, it would be a lot all by itself, or it would be a landlocked piece of property at that point.
So you mentioned that two acres that's in the lower right-hand corner, that you're going to cut a street into making a cul-de-sac?
Yeah, there's a, there's a 60-foot easement there left open for the right-of-way for that road to go through in there into a cul-de-sac.
So phase two will be more homes, or it will be...
Yeah, it'll be homes.
Okay.
Single-family.
Further discussion?
No, unless there's a way we'd like to add anything.
I think the applicant's brought a good point. You know, we've been able to kind of look at the overall master plan and how he wants to phase it, and of course, that was not part of the zoning exhibit. In hindsight, we probably should have included that in the exhibit. I think the point was made that, you know, while there is, you know, 7.5 zoning, the adjoining neighborhood is in the infill district, which allows for the SF 5 lot. So from a compatibility standpoint, we thought that the SF 5 would be appropriate in this instance. Again, I think if you had the ability to see the overall master plan, and certainly you had the right to table it, and we can bring that back as an information item, you can kind of see how the overall property would develop.
Yeah, I just, I just, I guess for now, I can see visually seeing how this is going to be an attractive view of the city, you know, where, you know, are we developing any plans for, you know, are we just going to, are we just going to see a big garage door, a front door, you know, on these plots? Are we getting inserted? Yeah, it's just...
You know, the only thing I can rely on right now is, he did recommend a new treasure of plans, so, you know, what is the kind of, I have a whole fear of concern.
Any further discussion? I can see your wheels turning.
I don't know. We should, maybe we should see full wind, maybe that would be a sure feature. I don't know. We can, if we can, we can, maybe we can...
Is that a motion?
I'll make a, I'll make, I'll make a motion. Table it until we get a detailed plan.
Or if we could table it to definitive date, so we don't have to re-advertise it, so maybe we could table it to August 2nd meeting. That way, we don't have to re-advertise it, if we could.
Well, if we do have a five-year agenda package, we should come up here and we have something to exhibit.
You just, you had the exhibit of how the lots are laid out. I think you're also looking at, you're looking at, I think, more the overall master plan of how the, how the adjoining properties would develop.
Mr. Counsel, would that be, is that going to put you in mind?
I mean, of course, it is going to postpone the process of dealing with property, considering we have, you know, utilities on the ground. We have all of our sewer pipe, all of our water pipe on the, on the facility. I mean, here, here's one comment to my call, I mean, I've built house after house on 50-foot lots, and I have beautiful facades. I mean, I can throw, you know, 50 houses at you that have, that are beautiful in every aspect, so I, I don't really understand your concern there. I mean, I don't know if, that you've really been focusing on that size lot and what's going on there, but... But yeah, I mean, as far as he is, in his, in his, in his aspect, there is a road coming through there, so that, that is the challenge for the property and the reason for the depths of those lots. And then, of course, the berm, so taking that all into consideration, I mean, John, is it going to end up being one lot? I mean, with the master plan that we've looked at and reviewed for the north side of this lot? Yeah, that's, I mean, it would be one lot, is what I would think after, if we went a different route.
Okay, let me understand. Are you saying that if you leave it at 7.5, you, you can't, you can't make, make your plan work, that you have to be at, at, at five in order to make it work?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, everything has been engineered up to this point, and I mean, everything has been ordered based on this structure of lots going through 13 being 50-foot wide. I mean, 8 through 13 are actually 53.3 wide, so there is, you know, a little wider there.
And so would you share with Councilmember Cora, the size of the lots in the rest of the development?
Adjacent to this, if you look north of this, and the wooded area all to the left, that is all within the infill overlay residential district, which allows for 50-foot lot widths. So that whole section of, that whole wooded area to the left on the map will be all 50-foot lots.
And anywhere in the development, are there going to be larger than 50-foot lots?
Um, I mean, the 60 acres north of the, yes, I mean, there's 120-foot wide lots all throughout that, all throughout that planning and around the lake. And then everything north of it, coming back up to Bond, I mean, those are all 60 and 70-foot wide lots, so. I mean, it is just this one track, and then everything to the left, and then the reason being, I mean, to go forward with the project, because it was in the residential infill. And I mean, this is directly across the street.
That makes it work, I don't know if it's kind of pressing, but if you put it down to a bigger lot.
Okay, so am I to assume that Councilmembers, Cora writes, motion fails for lack of a second? Okay, then I need a motion.
Was the public hearing closed?
I'm sorry?
Was the public hearing closed?
Uh, no, the public hearing was not closed. Julie, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed, and yes, it was closed. It was closed before we started discussing with council, so. So I close in five, just for security. Okay, so, the motion dies for lack of a second. Further discussion from the council?
Say, we're going to go in there, watch where it goes, right now.
A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the word, it's changing, it's a new, it's a way property can be seen, and it's 7.5, so it needs to be straight to the single man, and it has to be straight.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Cora Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Medina.
You abstained.
Oh, you abstained, okay. Please let the record reflect that Councilmember Cora, you abstained. Item 6A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a resolution of the City Council of the City of Denison, Texas, finding that a public necessity exists to acquire property in decent or municipal facilities, including but not limited to city offices, public work storage, annual public restrooms, which property is generally described as being located at 321 West Main, Denison, Texas, and which property is most particular described as OTP Denison Lot 48, Lot 22, 25 by 120, Grayson County, Texas, providing notice of an official determination to acquire real property by eminent domain for municipal facilities, including public restrooms, authorizing the city manager to obtain necessary appraisal reports and make bona fide offers of just compensation for the property, ratifying prior documents obtained and made for acquisition of the property, authorizing legal counsel to institute eminent domain proceedings on behalf of the city for the acquisition of the property. If negotiations are unsuccessful, appropriating funds from a lawful source and providing for an effective date. Ms. Ford?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Oh, there it is, thank you. As you're aware, the city does have the authority under both state law and under your city charter to exercise, exercise the power of domain when it is done so for a public purpose. Your city manager and staff have investigated locations for municipal facilities to be in the downtown area, such as city offices, public restrooms, et cetera, and determined that this location is a location that is needed for such facilities, and the address is at 321 West Main. As you know, it is currently a vacant tract of land with no improvements currently there on. Before you can proceed with acquiring property by eminent domain, it is necessary to adopt the ordinance or resolution that sets forth the procedures and find that the public necessity exists for acquiring the property. As far as those procedures go, there will be, after the resolution is adopted, the property owner will be provided a landowner bill of rights, as well as an initial offer to purchase. They'll be given at least 30 days to respond to that offer. They're not required to respond to the offer, but of course, we hope that they will. If they don't during that 30-day period, then a final offer will be sent, along with a copy of an appraisal for the property, and that final offer will at least equal the amount determined by the appraiser to be the value of the property. And so those will be the steps that will follow if you adopt this resolution this evening. I'm a... I'm available to answer any questions, should you have them.
Questions for Ms. Ford?
Discussion from council? A motion, and please agree with the motion, and word for word.
Mayor, I move that the City of Denison authorized the use of power of eminent domain to acquire attractive land located at three-twenty-one West Main, Denison, Texas, and which property is more particularly described as OTP Denison Lot Forty-eight, Lot Twenty-two, Twenty-five by one-hundred-and-twenty, Grayson County, Texas, as more fully described in Exhibit A of the proposed resolution to this item, for the listed school facilities, including but not limited to city offices, public work storage, and overall public restrooms, and other public uses in the document, Resolution number four-zero-five.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander, and a second by Councilmember Doty, this requires a roll-call vote, Ms. Wallenkind.
As I call your name, if you please say yes or no, Mayor Pro Tim Hander?
Yes.
Councilmember Courtright?
Yes.
Councilmember Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Councilmember Doty?
Yes.
Councilmember Crowley?
Yes.
Councilmember Spiegel?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Item six B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a resolution approving staff recommendations for the usage of funds related to the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one, Ms. Wagner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm gonna try to speak up last time I spoke, I don't talk loud enough.
That is, that is a true fact for that.
I thought it was pretty rough, but, um, yes, tonight we bring to you a resolution, um, for a recommendation for the usage of the funds that you already received. And as we spoke to you, um, maybe, all right, let's talk about American Rescue Plan, we talked a little bit about this during the budget workshop, I'll have her kind of give you, and we're gonna talk about where we plan on moving forward. Just a little background, this year, Department of Treasury has provided vast amount of guidance for these funds, and so, there's about a committee of five staff members that have been working on this, looking at it, researching it, Kimberly Nolan's been helping, she's here, and the Flipster, who's been helping with that, and she is here. And so, just wanted to give a little credit, of course, because they've done a lot of research on this, um, American Rescue Plan. And so, um, as you can see here, American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-one, and also called Public Rescue Plan, with one-point-nine, nine trillion, this economic bill passed about the first of the year, and has a safe promise, and then it was signed into law March eleventh, and this year, um, this is supposed to help speed up our recovery from the economic and health effects of COVID nineteen, and non-oriental sessions, and the country is seeing this. Within this economic stimulus bill, the American Rescue Plan, about a three-hundred-and-fifty billion dollars, and the City of Denison has been awarded seven-point-three, it's changed, you can see there, of which three-point-six would actually already have received, and, and the second had been awarded, we distributed next year around the same time, and we're receiving on June first. And so, I wanna talk to you a little bit about, um, the total funds here, and so, what we're receiving, this is half, exactly half of what we're supposed to receive. And so, um, based on, um, the guidance from the Department of Treasury, um, there's several different categories that, um, we can use the funds for. And they can be public health, whether it's personal protective equipment, um, payroll costs for public health, um, safety, public sector staff, um, negative economic impacts, um, rehiring of public safety sector staff, job training for those, um, clean water, um, clean, um, which has to do with sewer infrastructure, and then for our drinking water transmission distribution. And so, based on that, um, this first half of the funds that we received, we're looking at infrastructure needs for water and sewer, and we're also looking at the streets, of course, ones who tear up those streets, but within the water sewer structure, you have to put those back the way, um, you know, the way that they need to be, and then revenue recovery. We're looking at our infrastructure here, um, one-point-four million, and, so, we have some infrastructure priorities for ARP funds. I met with the Public Works Director, Carrie Jones, and she had met with her staff, and talked to them about what are some priorities that we can use these funds for. These are not the priorities we just tackled in front of you, that you saw at the budget workshop, but these are some priorities that we think we can take care of with these funds. Now, obviously, though, if we start off with the first one, which is eleven-hundred, good fourteen-hundred blocks of South Seven, working on water sewer stream, we'll take whatever funds are left after that and work our way down, we may or may not get through all, all of these, but this is the progression here, the priorities for those. And this is a map, which is kinda hard to sell, so we're gonna use it later. And I believe this is South Seventh Avenue, and we're going to be replacing water sewer and streams here. And then the seven-hundred East, well, like, um, East, seven-hundred block of East, well, obviously, we can't see the large sewer lines here, they need to be replaced. Seven-hundred East Hall, seventeen-hundred West Johnson, um, in there, you didn't see two-hundred, um, it was in the case, that's because it is an unimproved alley, and so, we won't be putting anything, we're just watering there, but those are the priorities, and the staff felt we can use these ARP funds. Any questions? And so, the remainder of the funds, um, this is the revenue recovery, the two-point-one million, it's based on calculation that was given to us by the Department of Treasury, and based on that, that is revenue recovery that goes back to our general fund, it can be used for some of the things that some of our earlier training, staffing, capital needs. Because if you recall, our request for capital needs for this fiscal year was based on the effects of COVID, and so, when we're usually six to nine million dollars a year, we were a little over two million in requests this last year, so now we gotta pay catch-up, right? Our lease tried to, and so, none of those funds have been used. So, with that said, um, staff recommends approval of the resolution, and that is in the packet there, um, to, and the, and the resolution is, is kinda covers all of those areas I talked about, doesn't state specific priority of projects, that way the funds are not able to be used for that this year, so possibly we can move those to next year. Um, because we will be receiving the exact amount next year, at the same time, I will find the council for.
Questions for Ms. Wagner?
Yeah, could you go back to that slide about with the, um, that, no, the two-point-one million? So, I guess, um, and I know y'all got some kinda formula working, um, it just concerns me that we're spending more for staffing and training, capital needs, I'm not sure what that means.
That's what's happening, is this, this is money that's gotta go back into revenue to help replace the revenue that we lost last year, and so, because of that, we had to cut back. If you recall, when we, when we went into COVID last year, we said, okay, we're, we're cutting costs five to ten percent, every division, cut your costs five to ten percent. So, we cut back on training, we, we did a higher increase, and we didn't purchase the capital that we needed to purchase, like I said earlier. We were, people were telling, do not ask for anything, we do not have the funding for it currently.
It was things that were budgeted last year.
Right, it just, it wouldn't.
Well, there's more, I mean, you know, like I said, you know, we could use this for personal protection equipment, all of a sudden, but that would be considered capitalizing, uh, the general fund.
I guess I'm concerned about the image where we spend one-point-five on streets and two-point-one on.
We're claiming the revenue recovery upfront, and then the remainder of it is infrastructure, for the rest, next year, we have to be using for infrastructure, because we've already claimed all of our revenue recovery upfront, so we have to do that.
Okay.
So, essentially, if we do it now, we have three million that's not as restricted next year.
Okay.
Any further questions for Ms. Wagner? Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution approving staff recommendation for the usage of funds related to the American Ri- Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley, and a second by Councilmember Spiegel, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item seven A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and receive direction from council on the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget. Ms. Wagner?
Yes, good evening, I'm in contact. Nothing has really changed here, but I just wanted to bring it back to the forefront, but not that we're in the middle of budget costs, um, just kinda go over this again. We have not changed the numbers, because it's only been a couple of weeks since we had, um, the budget workshop, and we're just now closing out the month of June this week. And so, um, nothing has really changed, we just kinda wanna give you a, a review again of, um, where we budgeted for, when we're projected to be, um, fiscal year twenty-one budget, twenty-four days, anticipating sixty-four days, because we have received our grant first, and then back from the Parize Act funding, which is separate from the American Rescue Plans, the American Rescue Plans, we set that money in the current fund, and we wanna coordinate that until council has this direction. And this is proposed for next year, and this, um, again, this is having to do with ARP funding, and it, nor does it have any capital built into these expenses either for next year. And then, same thing with utility fund, um, twenty-one budget, and what we did is, is anywhere we found, we gave, the projection, a lot of that has to do with the winter storm of fiscal year twenty-one, that we just heard, that's one of the base reserves, and it's made to go down. There is no female reimbursement money, you don't get here yet, because you know me, I don't go with it until we get it, until we know that this is headed our way. So, when we receive that reimbursement money, that will take that negative twenty-two thousand issue.
Excuse me.
Question?
And then projected for next year. Again, um, no capital, we're not going to, that's okay. Extended request, we're talking about this as well, and we have capital, it's been a lot, we're gonna increase personnel request. This is what I was talking about, we usually ask, staff asks for six to nine million, um, each year, you, you can see, um, going back to fiscal year eighteen, around six million, not much, nine million, twenty-one. We said, yeah, so, in our staff, we're very big about doing what we're asked of them, and so, if it down to two-point-nine, well, what does that do to us? We're trying to advance it up again, because we didn't take care of some of these this year, we're gonna take care of some of those needs this next year. And we're gonna wrap. It's been a request so far this year, um, I'm just sorry, we're fifteen-point-eight, looking with capital, probably being ten-point-seven, personal, two-point-five, and modeling, we're seeking this two-point-five. And just have a chart, one of the charts. Again, we do set aside options, those touch revenue to general capital fund, this is about three-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, we're anticipating for next year. And then we set a south option, water cells, or the utility capital fund, and that's about three-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, anticipating for next year. To work with, to take care of some of those needs that we just, um, those fifteen, we have. And that's all that happens, no, um, so, the, 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 we're actually, we're actually, we're, we will be paying that event to company, and then, and, 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 and.
Questions for Wagner? All right, thank you, ma'am. There being no need for an executive session this evening, and no further business to come before this council, the time is six forty-two, and we are adjourned.